Good evening. It is Monday, May 3rd, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. It is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call and meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Administrator, have you had a chance to take role?
All are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda Board. You'll see the consent agenda presented. Are there any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
A lot of people will be excited about the dog park something.
Yeah, it was, uh, too bad the pandemic hit us last year. We weren't able to do it on our last fiscal budget. Nice and first, that's just James Park.
Makes a lot of people ask.
Yeah, yeah. If there are no questions or discussion items, can we entertain a motion to pass a consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent Agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. Uh, first item under Mayor's remarks this evening is I want to talk about, uh, the creation of a position for the Carney Police Department, uh, the creation of a captain position. Chief Carey is creating a position of a police captain based on the salary survey that I conducted. I see these positions, uh, allowing us to prepare for the future of any leadership transitions and prepare for updating the city's police salary, uh, schedule, which is needed to, uh, continue to compete with our neighbor, neighboring cities. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. Um, obviously, any, any, uh, amendments to the budget would be required, uh, to be approved by the board, but, um, as I said, I just wanted to make you aware that he has requested that position. Next, I would like to, uh, turn it over to our Parks Director. I've asked Mr. Eric Marshall to provide us an update on the Lions Park progress. And then after his decision for, I would like our Assistant Parks Director, Ryan Marquardt, to give us an update on, uh, our, uh, spring sports. Eric, for all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Board of Aldermen, uh, Jim, and, uh, members that are, uh, listening in. Just an update real quick. As you can see, uh, last week, the, uh, restroom facility was, uh, brought in via crane. And since then, the front, uh, lower half portion of the bathroom, um, basically on three of the four sides is complete with the stone. This stone matches the stone that will be used, uh, not only on the sundial, which is yet to be, um, completed, but the stone front, uh, that is our, our main sign attraction into the park, which is located right on the corner of Second and 33. We think that the, Ryan, if you want to flip, you can. Um, we think this stone really accents and, um, we were able to incorporate at, um, not only the Lions, uh, club request, but, uh, through staff requests, some of the features in the old park. As you can see, the Ned Bailey sign, um, that will be right next to the water fountain, which in this close-up picture, you can see the, the blue hose there. That is the actual connection hose to the water fountain, which will be located on the south side of the bathroom. So, we were happy that that inlay worked well. Uh, some of these pictures are from today, uh, just so we can get you the, the best update. The wood, um, that will show from the inside of the shelters, um, has begun to take place on the, uh, two large pavilions. Uh, the far pavilion, um, is almost complete. This one is a little bit further behind, but, uh, they did both bottom sections and then they are working towards the top. And, uh, the other pavilion actually has three sections of the four done. As you can see, the Lions Park, um, sign up there, we think really, really looks nice. And, and there will be a top, um, feature right above the S on Lions Park. Um, there will be a, uh, another sign, uh, not a sign, but a medallion type of a, uh, of a tree there. Next slide, Ryan, please. There you can see, um, the top portion of the, that would be the furthest west shelter, um, that, and they have got this, uh, top section that they're working on right now totally complete. Next section. This just shows, uh, another part of the, the pavilion itself. The playground is, uh, complete, uh, other than, uh, some minor issues that, uh, we are having Park Planet look at, uh, that we did, Ryan, um, Marquardt, myself, or, um, uh, Architect Larry, uh, from Vario, we did a walkthrough on that. And there's some minor defects that we need to have taken place. And, um, um, Park Planet is looking to get those corrections taken place for us.
Hey, Eric?
Yes.
Can I, if you could go back to that last picture, Ryan, I wanted to point out, there, I walked this with Eric and Ryan. There's a lot of cool features, but check out that, that swing on the, the bottom left-hand corner. That's one of those little baby swings, but this one, you can see the mother, it has a swing where she can set right in front facing the baby.
That's cool.
It's so cool. So cool. I'm so excited. Sorry, Eric. I just wanted to point that out.
No, in fact, if, uh, any of you, uh, board members have a comment or a concern, please interject, uh, so we can, uh, take note of it and, and go from there. On this picture, it depicts the, um, the one toddler swing, uh, right next to the swing that Mayor just, uh, uh, mentioned. So we do have one single toddler swing there. And to the left is the, uh, toddler area. So there are two separate areas, which we really, really liked as we incorporated the playground. Um, that way, uh, the, you know, we hope that the, uh, the big kids, you know, or the smaller kids don't feel intimidated by the larger kids playing and they have their own area. So, we, we really like that. Around this area, uh, that you see the concrete, uh, there's, um, uh, some areas that Mega will be doing. Uh, they're formed up for the actual benches that go around this area. And then naturally, when RJR starts to pour their splash pad, uh, later this week, which I'll mention earl- uh, later on, um, that is where the park benches will be going. So, you really can't see them from here, but, and this is, um, go ahead, Ryan, that's all right. Uh, this is the, um, the polygon shelter for the band shell. This is, um, uh, how they, how the structure looks before they start putting any of the wood or the metal on top of it. We added, um, an extra outlet to both sides of this, uh, for power, because it was only supposed to be on one of these posts. Um, and they are doing that one at no charge, but we upgraded the, the shelters for, uh, power on, on, uh, two of the four corners. So, there'll be plenty of power here for people. And it is not yet to final grade. That's why you see that. This is, uh, looking south, or excuse me, looking north from the south. Um, the round tube right here, that will be the actual sundial. So the sundial will actually work. And as I mentioned earlier, the stone that is on the bottom half of the restroom and also the, uh, entrance sign will be covered with this, uh, stone. And on the backside of that photo right there, you can see the, uh, the pad, uh, for the Lions Club bench. And right in front of that is where we inlaid, uh, one of the, uh, memorial signs, uh, again, from the original Lions Park. So we were able to incorporate those. And this is, uh, taken from the actual sundial, the new sundial location, uh, looking northeast at the actual splash, uh, pad location. They are pretty much ready to go. Uh, they finished, um, they just have a few more things of touch up with their rock base. They will be pouring the inside where they are located at right now on Wednesday. And then the outside sidewalk that joins with this concrete sidewalk right here, that will be poured on Friday. So, Wednesday and Friday of this week, it will look much different in there. And again, this is the backside of the restroom, uh, that you can see almost all of the, the stone is in place. And you can see the, the Ned Bailey sign, uh, where the water fountain is located, uh, right below that to the right. So, things are progressing. Um, I do know we, we, uh, after, um, this has taken place, uh, the, uh, landscaper is, uh, ready to start coming in, uh, to lay sod. Uh, the decorative fence will be going up. Uh, that will come in two phases. Um, that will start this later this week because they want to be able to allow RJR to, um, get their, uh, concrete in. And they will be using a big pump truck, uh, to get that concrete in. Um, naturally, I mentioned the sundial. They'll continue to work with the stone to get that sundial fixed. Um, the security system, all the conduit is in, the wiring is in for that. Um, and then, um, the roof panels and, uh, cleanup and walk-through. And so, it's, it's coming along. Um, we didn't think so about a month ago, but it's amazing what a few dry days and, and what they can do to, to get things rolling again. So, we're, uh, still waiting on the, uh, picnic tables that go under the shelters. Uh, those naturally are on order, but, um, as many things are, it's, it's a hurry up and wait for the actual product to get here. Ryan, I don't have anything. If you, if I'd forgotten something you might want to add, go ahead. And if not, if there's any questions or comments from the board, I would, um, hopefully I can entertain a question and answer session.
Eric, do we have any idea of an opening date?
Um, the total completion date is to be June 1st. However, we, uh, with change orders and things, they have, and they are granted the 10 days due to change orders. So, we're hoping mid-June at the, at the latest. Um, that's what we're shooting for. It could be earlier. Uh, if things go like they have been going, um, we know that sod around, um, with, with your all's approval, uh, we were able to do sod around the complete splash pad, or, or that would've got really muddy. Um, but we still are shooting for a mid-June date. And if it's earlier, that's great. June 10th is their actual, with, uh, 10 days of, uh, change order time, uh, extension, that's their contract time.
Great. Thanks for the update, Eric.
Sure. Thank you.
Ryan, do you have, uh, anything to add as far as for our, our spring sports? How, how that's starting off this year?
Uh, yeah, we, uh, so, tonight is our first official night of, uh, our, uh, ball diamond season, uh, with softball tonight. Uh, we have baseball tomorrow. We have, uh, slightly older kids, the 12-year softball and baseball on Wednesday. And then our little kids, our T-ball starts on Saturday. Um, we've had soccer going for two weeks now of games. Um, everything's going real well. Uh, we have just shy of 400 kids signed up, uh, in our spring sports. Uh, so that's, you know, that's really good. Um, and we actually, tonight is the start of our adult pickleball league. So, uh, got a lot of fun recreation stuff going and going on in Carney right now.
Great. Appreciate the update. Uh, we'll, we'll move on to the next item under the Mayor's remarks. I, uh, asked our, uh, Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Donnie Smith, to provide an update on our water main, uh, replacement project. I'd like to give some update on, Mr. Donnie?
I kind of took privilege on this and kind of do a mid-year update for all departments.
Perfect.
Kind of hit the big projects, nothing, none of the mundane daily items. So I'll keep it to the minimum here. The street department has replaced the big tube going to the back 40 at Jesse James Farm Road. Two years ago, it failed. So we couldn't get tractors and stuff to the back 40. Haven't been able to do the fireworks show. We're working on it. Um, but we're ready for that. Um, they've also-
Think you, you put, you did that in-house?
Yes, we did that in-house. Um, we've prepared an alternative pad for the dumpster site to make way for the dog park because the dumpster's in the way now. So, we've got that done for the Parks Department. Um, we've identified some water problems because of the Oak Ridge deal behind Iron Mikes. In-house again, new tube, redigged, and it worked well this last rain. So that's another thing we've done in-house. Uh, we replaced one drain tube on North Grove. We've identified it got crushed when we were doing the main project. And while the roads are messed up, we've decided with Jim's leading that anything we run across like that, we've replaced. Driveway tubes, any of them that's been crushed or pulled, we've replaced. Sewer Department, Mike has been, him and his guys have been getting the UV building, which you guys have graciously got the money to us that we can get one of our banks up to 100% this year. And hopefully next year, we can get the other bank. Um, he's identified a wet well grease issue in the headworks building that he's working on, getting bid together. There's, right now, there's no way to dissipate the grease getting into the plant and it's making a big ball. So he's working on that to get that rectified. And the Water Department has got a lot of stuff going on. We've, uh, got the filters, as you know, replaced, cleaned, new, up and running 100%. The center cone, which is where the lime mixing goes on, the chlorine mixing goes on, has been cleaned. That hasn't been done in four to five years. Supposed to be done every two to three. So, that was well-leaded and is finished. The Grove Street project, 100% of the mains are complete. They're all in the ground right now. 100% of all the tie-ins, tie-overs, I'm sorry, all the tie-overs. So, the services off Old Main onto the new main are complete as of now. Tomorrow, they're starting the tie-ins, which are hooking to our existing mains. So we're going to have some water outages. If you guys get, um, any phone calls, that'll be wide. We have door knockers and trying to cover all the areas, but we're still trying to make sure that all the mains get shut off so that they can do the tie-overs. So that's going to be the remainder of this week. Boring any rain, they will be finished by Friday, is what he says. And their cleanup will be all that's left by Friday. So that job will be 100%, hopefully, barring weather. Okay, um, the Decker project on Ninth Street, 75% of that main's in. They've got the water tied in on Marguerite. And it's complete down to, if you know, we're just past, uh, Beverly's House. That's where they're at with it. So they're, they identified today what they had to tie in on North Prospect. And once they get that figured out, that block will be finished. So, I would say that one's 75% done on Ninth Street. Um, the check valve, which Jim knows has been on the docket since 19, I believe, it is installed on, it's on Grove and, uh, Frank Street approximately. Um, it's been failed for some, a number of years, but we've got it replaced and it is complete. Um, Jim, are you listening? Our water monitors are on and collecting data. We got water monitors last year, um, kind of got them late in the year and they've got to be on a fire hydrant. We can't leave them on during the winter, obviously, because they freeze. But they are on and collecting data.
Hey, Jim, did you get that?
It sounds like a report to the mayor needed to be done more often.
And lastly, I say this loosely, that we've been working with the water, I mean, the Fire Department, but they've been doing all the work. They have been flushing and checking all of our fire hydrants, checking flows, and reporting to us if they have problems. That way, we know and they know that if there's a fire event, which hydrants flow, how many gallons, so they know where to go. That's something that's been on the, the case list for, I don't know how long. But I appreciate them doing that for us and giving us the data when they find it. And that's about all I got. That's the highlight, folks.
Donnie, I, it's, uh, always exciting to, to see us invest in our infrastructure. So, uh, appreciate your leadership and, and helping us get those callings too. Uh, only question I have is, uh, it sounds like Kissick's, uh, real close to being out of town on our, our big water main replacement project. Uh, that's exciting. When can we anticipate our, our temporary storage lot to be turned back to green space instead of a gravel lot?
As soon as they clear it out.
Okay, great.
I'm going to get that done. I, I'll be in contact with David. The minute I get their last piece of equipment out there, we'll be in there cleaning it out.
Perfect.
Do we have any idea where all the grease is coming from? Is it just a combination or? The grease. That you talked about-
The headworks.
The headworks. Yeah, it's, it's just people dumping grease down the, the sewer mains. So we don't have a, a main source to it that's just kind of involved? No, it's, it's just, well, it's just slowly building up and making a ball. It just has nowhere to go when it gets there. Right. That has never been identified. And Mike caught the buildup and has been working on. We've got three different ideas and three different prices. And he's been checking with people to try to figure out which is the best way to go. And it's, it's costly, but not terrible. We're 10 to 30 is what, what they're looking at, depending on which way we decide.
Mike, Mike, uh, does a great job running that plan.
Yes, yes, he does. I got to give him kudos because it's probably the quietest department I have, you know? And it's the purpose. No problem.
See what you did there, Donnie. Thank you for your report. Uh, before, the next item under Mayor's remarks is this, uh, is I, I didn't know if, if the board had, uh, got together and, and made a decision on Board President, if there's been any discussion. And if so, um, I wanted to give you the option to entertain a motion to, to place that on a vote this evening.
I would make that motion to put it to a vote.
Okay.
I would nominate Dan Holt.
I can get a second first.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So we will open the floor for nominations this evening.
Nominate Dan Holt.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, uh, all in favor of Dan Holt? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Dan Holt is our Board President. That concludes Mayor's remarks. We'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, did want to share with the board, uh, because it was a, a matter of topic at the end of our board meeting last time, uh, about, uh, an emergency access to, uh, address the Fire District's request on Greenfield. And we had a productive meeting here on Friday morning with, uh, Jerry Seiler. And, uh, um, both, uh, the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief were present. And, uh, we think we've got, uh, a, uh, solution to, uh, for them to build a road. Uh, it'd be emergency access road out to the existing, uh, farm field entrance. And, uh, they do have a spec. It's, uh, you know, that it would be, uh, it, they use a filter fabric, uh, that, uh, with, uh, covered with rock. So it, so it will, you know, it'll be an effective, um, way to, to carry emergency traffic. And, uh, there was some, I think, discussion about, uh, maybe gating it, uh, for, uh, using a, a common lock or something like that. And, uh, all those, those things will be worked out, uh, as we get closer to the time. But, but, uh, I'm here to report to you that our Fire, our Fire Marshal's here. And I, I think we were, all went away with, uh, with a, an idea that this was going to be suitable to, uh, serve the interim between phases.
Yeah, I was obviously present for that meeting as well. Um, thanks for giving the, the board the update on that item. Uh, yeah, it is, as the Seiler family has been, they've been great partners with the city and, um, you know, they're, they're paying for 100% of this cost to provide the emergency access, uh, which did, not just before the Fire District, but did satisfy, uh, the Fire District and, and their concerns. So, I think it's a win-win for everybody and I appreciate, uh, the, the developers, uh, putting forth that effort.
And this is a memo that David prepared, uh, back to Jerry, uh, describing our understanding of how things would work. So, uh, uh, so we have that as part of the agenda in miscellaneous. So just want to make sure you, uh, had a had chance to see that. Uh, that's about all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to public requests and petitions. Sorry to keep Mr. Scholl waiting this evening. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, Bill Scholl is making a request for his annual fireworks display to be held on July the 3rd in Beverly Park. It's a Class C, uh, display that he, he obtains the, uh, necessary licensing and, uh, has had, uh, no issues over the, what decade he's done it.
That's true. Been fun for my family and, and I think for most of the city to be able to enjoy the display. But we just like to have the city's permission to do it again this year. Um, again, we're going to make it a private display. We'll restrict it largely to, uh, family and a few guests. But of course, the entire neighborhood will be invited to enjoy it from their backyards.
I don't have any questions from Mr. Scholl. Board, you guys have any questions or concerns with the request?
I think it's wonderful. What year will this be for you?
I've lost track. Probably fifteen or 15 years.
I was thinking about that. Wonderful.
Are you, is that required, uh, some simple motion?
A simple motion to the board would be appropriate, I believe.
Entertaining motion to-
I have a motion to approve the fireworks.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Congratulations, Mr. Scholl. Before you leave, sir, and I feel like I'm putting you on the spot, but I have two questions for you. Uh, one would be if perhaps the City of Carney would have a hard time finding a fireworks vendor for our July 3rd show. Um, don't expect an answer from you this evening, but I'd like you to maybe to consider if we could help fund your show and make that the city show as kind of a, if, if, if that's where we get at. Um, I, I will mention where we, I, I think there's a shortage of fireworks, um, of the materials to make them. And, uh, that we're having a hard time finding a, uh, a vendor that has the material for a patriotic, uh, shoot. Second is I would anticipate the City of Carney funding a fireworks, uh, display like you're gracious enough to, to do for us for our, our lighted Christmas parade. And I would, uh, hope that, uh, you and, and your group of volunteers would, would consider, uh, helping us out there again. Like I said, I don't expect an answer for that right now, but I just want to make you aware that that ask would probably forthcoming in a couple of months.
Oh, let me give you a couple of answers now.
Sure.
I'm very, very happy to do the Christmas display. Um, I probably would be very reluctant to do this year's July 3 display because that's always been a family event. The family comes in, the family participates. And as much as I would like to help the city out, this, this has been something that we've done as a family for about 15 years.
Makes sense.
Fair enough and, and respect that. Sounds good, sir. We, uh, congratulations on, on getting your request and, uh, look forward to a good patriotic celebration.
Well, and as always, everybody is invited to attend. I don't know if we've had anyone come yet, but the invitation is always open.
I was there two years ago.
I was there two years ago.
Where were you?
I was sitting over in Jason's yard, watching it go off.
Well, you can't see anything from my neighbor's yard.
You gotta be in his yard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scholl.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings scheduled this evening. We have no old business and no new business to discuss. So we'll move on to Alderman Discussion and Alderman Spencer.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Holt?
I would like to put it into record, I was actually talking to Jerry before. We had a longtime resident here in Carney who is a history buff. And I've been asking for years to go to the Carney Museum. And he thought it was, because it was small, that it wouldn't be much, whatever. He finally went and he called and he just ran and raved. He couldn't believe how nice the museum was and, and the displays and how well they were presented. And I think that speaks a lot of Jerry. I think it speaks a lot of our community, of people donating the things that needs to make our, our museum great. And he's a person who goes to a lot of museums, so it's, he had something to, to gear it by. And so I'm just really proud of our, our museum. It's good to have somebody who goes to a lot of museums come in and, and rant and rave over your museum. So I just wanted to share that, that for all those folks out there that have never been to the Carney Museum, you really need to come down and see what we have down here because it's, it is really, a really nice museum.
And come back often.
And come back often.
Gary and her.
Can we put his name in the record?
Yeah, Gary Johnson. Lives over on 22nd Street.
Right. There you go.
They've, they've added some inter, cool interactive, you know, displays this year, so.
Yep.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Alderman Lehman?
Just a couple of things to, to piggyback off Alderman Holt's. I've been a Carney lifelong resident and I'm, I'm ashamed to admit I had never been to the museum until last month. It's, it's really cool. Brings back a lot of memories from, from my childhood, living here. And, you know, looking at the stuff that's there, it's just like, wait a minute, I remember where that was. And I remembered. And, and so it was really neat. So I, I would encourage anybody that's, that's lived in the Carney area for, for all their life or even the newcomers that, that are coming to town. I would encourage you to come out and visit the museum. It's, it's really neat. I was very impressed. So Jerry done a great job over there, so. Lastly, but certainly not least, Mr. Scholl, it is great to see that the fireworks display is going to happen. It brings us back to some sort of normality, I think. And it's, it's great to see, it's great to see that normality coming back. And, and I think everybody, when those fireworks goes off, they know exactly where they're coming from. So it's, it's great to see that. And so thank you for doing that. And I, I think I speak for a lot of people in town that drive very slowly around town watching. So it's neat, neat to see that come back. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I appreciate the board's support over every year as well. That's all I have.
Alderman Berger?
Yeah, I just would like to, to say that seeing the recreation opportunities coming back to the community is great. And the Lions, Lions Park and Splash Pad are, are almost there and ready for, for use. And we have the dog park now getting ready to go in. And seeing soccer and baseball and T-ball and even pickleball. Getting, you know, getting started back up is really great. This community has always done, has always made a commitment to recreation for, for our citizens. And so seeing all that, get back to work again is, is really great.
All right.
Oh, one other thing, if you don't.
Your turn's already passed.
Yeah, same. I forgot about, this Thursday is.
Piccadilly.
Well, it's Piccadilly. That's true. We've got Piccadilly coming Thursday too. But also we got a prayer at the pole. All the churches in town are coming together to pray for our city, our nation, and for our community. So that's something that our, our community can get behind as well. It's really neat to see when all the churches pull together and do something together.
That's noon out here?
Noon out here.
All right. If we have nothing else to discuss this evening, can we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We already have a good evening. Thank you.
Yep.